I've been plotting by Shoré Klaantko to rescue the country from the claws of the Bimbo that have destroyed the country. If you don't go to politics, politics will come to you. Yes, you can say I live in UK and I am less concerned about Nigerian politics and what goes on in Nigeria. I tell you this, the bulk of the money we make in diaspora is remitted to our family back home. In 2016, Nigerians in diaspora remitted 35 billion dollars to Nigeria. A clear indication that every Nigerian diaspora sends money each time you receive financial distress calls from your family. What do you expect from a country that is struggling to pay our workers £2 per day or less? Or 65 pounds per month? Dear fellow take backers, the time is now. Nigeria has been stagnated for the past 58 years. Demographically, two thirds of Nigerian population are youth. I bet you, if we are serious enough, we can disallow this abba from mortgaging our present and destroying our future. Greatest Nigerian youth, the message is resonating, the time is now. Ladies and gentlemen, we need everyone on board. Let the meat out, aside the financial contribution, we need your support, we need your votes, we need volunteers, we need full soldiers to take the message to them. If you are still having ripples in your tummy about the alternative to the two same parties, APC, EDP, AAC, TIB is the answer. Fellow, take it back, we can do it together. Thank you very much. Take it back!
Action!
Take it back! Action! The speech by Comrie Wale, I would like to apologize for something I did not do properly. He is also the assistant legal advisor to the party for South West. So he is the national officer of AAC in Nigeria. And you can also see from what he has said, he is bringing up points from every corner and to also portrays the aim of AAC in trying to make sure we have a better Nigeria. AAC!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
Now, we are going to have, before our presidential candidate speaks, also the next president of Nigeria speaks, we have a jingu, a guy, a very talented Nigerian has produced a jingu for us. This jingu will be used in our campaign, though we have twenty jingu's flying around on YouTube right now. But this man spent his time and is trying to make sure that this jingu goes all over the country in different languages, in different languages in Nigeria. So I would like to call Mr. Aduna, Mr. Cowdade, to please come forward and give a call for you. Take it back!
Action!
The nice president of Nigeria and every other country going to here over there. Please pardon my shape, okay? You know, to take it back requires hardness, isn't it? Yeah, I'm not hard, so I'm trying to put some hardness on it, is that okay? So, okay, do I look hard now? Now, this is how we're gonna do it. I knew Omoye Yele Shoré first as an activist back then and today I'm meeting him, it's my greatest privilege to meet him as a politician. So putting that together, that sounds to me like a politivist. Politivist, and that's the attitude that I've put in this song. Okay, so if you want to join us, I have some young people here because this government is also for the future, for the young people. And please, welcome with me, Peace Square.
Promise.
Promise.
Promise, yeah. Prosper and promise, please put your hands together for him. So, Prosper is gonna be beside me here, and Promise here. So we're gonna demonstrate to you, as the DJ is getting ready to play the music for us, how we're gonna do it in a hard way. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Are you ready, guys? Are you ready? So when we say AAC, take it back, then take it back, action! You've had a good one! Please, please join us, please, please join us. Let's do it one more time. AAC, take it back! Take it back! Action! AAC, take it back! Take it back! Action! Okay, DJ, please slam it for us. Put it out.
Slam it, slam it, slam it.
It's time to turn heads to save our fatherland. Yes, 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 yes. Yes, let's start it from beginning.
AAC! Take it back! Take it back! Action!
Sorry, Foka, what did you do?
AAC! Take it back!
Let's do it together. Let's go! Action! AAC! Take it back!
Take it back! Action!
Let's go! Take it back! Action! Take it back! Action! Take it back! Action! Take it back! Action!
AAC! Take it back! Take it back! Action! AAC! Take it back! Take it back! Action!
Ladies and gentlemen, that was very...
Yes.
Now, we are going to go to the main event of today, which is the speech by Comrie Omoye Yele Shoré himself. He wants to, I'm sure most of you know, that he has gone over all the states in Nigeria. More than any other president candidate so far. Even if you total all their movements together, it does not equal Shoré's campaign. And he has moved, he has gone to almost every country that we have Nigerians residents, talking to them and mobilizing them. This man, I don't know what kind of energy he's got, but I wish I have that kind of energy. He is... He is a dynamite, so what is a dynamite? Thank you, he's a dynamite, that's good, that's good. So, I know he's gonna give us a very nice speech today and he's gonna welcome your questions. So if you have any question, I would like to start writing it down now because somebody is gonna go around to collect your questions, you will collect them together and then answer them. Because from experience, we know that a question and answer session normally runs into a long time. And then we know we are here for many, for fundraising. So I would like to welcome our next president of Nigeria, Comrie Omoye Yele Shoré.
Take it back!
Thank you, thank you. Please, have your seat, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. And I cannot do this without thanking the people of London. This is my second time here in London, this is actually our second time also in this space. And the last time we were in London, so many people were in doubt of our ability to stay the course, to start defining a little different political process and trajectory from Nigeria. A lot of people did not believe that some eighth months into the game, that would become the most talked about political movement in Nigeria. And now, two months after we started our political party, we are becoming the most talked about, the most dreaded political party in Nigeria. Because why? To have made it possible for us. London was the place where we had our best town hall meeting outside of Nigeria.
Take it back!
And in coming back here, we are merely reuniting with the spirit of liberation that also drove the independent struggle for Nigeria in 1960. It was here in the UK that a lot of the activists rose up, the support, the financial and moral support for independence took place in the United Kingdom. But the truth is that Nigeria is in need of brand new independence now. The independence we had in 1960 has expired and is obsolete because it did not produce and provide for us the kind of future that we desire as a people. In fact, most people in Nigeria are asking if a white man could come back and re-colonize Nigeria. Because the people, they handed over power to Nigeria, they are the most terrible internal colonizers of any people that you can imagine in the world. But we are not going to be really colonized by the whites anymore. We are going to be led by our own people. We are going to be led by people of conscience, people with energy, people with capacity, people with capability, people with integrity, and people who have stamina. Because it's very important that we have stamina, ladies and gentlemen. If you watch today, there are leaders all over the place in France. About seventy-nine presidents are in France. If you look at TV, you can't find a president there. Maybe he forgot to wake up, you know? So, because really, can we honestly and truthfully say today that we have leaders in Nigeria? The answer is no. The answer is no. But if we made the mistake up till now, we have a duty to turn the corner now. We have a duty not to make the same mistake that puts Nigeria in the condition that it has been in the last 58 years. By next year, we must change that trajectory. It's not only compulsory, it is a must. See, before, a lot of us were saying that maybe elections alone will do it for us. But now, we are preaching a message of a revolution in the country, that Nigeria needs a revolution. So whichever one comes first, if it's the election too good, if it's a revolution fantastic, but we cannot continue like this. And sometimes, people are worried about my tone. They said maybe it's a little bit aggressive. And sometimes they said it scares some people. I say, some people, they say, need to be scared. For too long, they are taking us for granted. You know, and sometimes they say I'm angry, and I say, if you are not angry with the situation of Nigeria, then something is wrong with you. You know, they are lucky that you are just merely angry. In other countries that face the kind of assaults that we have faced, the kind of insults upon injury, as they call it in Nigeria, on our sensibilities, on our persons, on our integrity, on our dignity as a people. Other countries would not be responding the way we are responding. They'll be responding in far wider and even more grievous ways that you are seeing now. But we have a chance to respond in a very civilized way because we have seen how the rest of the world is working. We have been able to understand and learn that we can make our countries work, or we can make our country work. When I use the word countries, it is because AAC is not only about liberating Nigeria, it's about liberating the continent of Africa.
Take it back!
Take it back! Action!
The continent is badly in need of the leadership of Nigeria so that the African continent can become a respectable place to live once again. It can become a place that is not just for people who are looking for raw materials, but people who are having respectable entry, I mean entry and exit out of the place on the terms of Africans themselves. Because I've been a teacher as well, apart from being an activist, I hate to use the word politician because being a politician in Nigeria means like a thief. It's a very deceptive question. When you have a conversation with somebody and they say, oh, you are playing politics, you know what it means. I don't want to be in front of someone who is playing politics. So as a teacher, I have learned and taught people about what is wrong with the continent of Africa. And I have understood why Africa is the way it is. And come to one single conclusion, that Africa is in the condition it is today because of the people of Africa, the way they are accepted to be treated, the way they are accepted to be governed, and the kind of leaders that they allow to govern them from time to time. Otherwise, ladies and gentlemen, how can Nigeria of beautiful, brilliant, courageous people like you be governed by dumb people for 58 years? And you will still get in the plane and go back, and these people will govern you, and you come back, and you continue to allow them to govern, and you call home, your people are complaining, and you ask them, what is wrong with us? Why is it that we cannot all unite and rise up one day and say, look, enough of this nonsense, enough is enough. How can in 2018 and 2019, the two options that are staring us in the face is between a man who has been declared lifeless and the other one who has admitted that he's a thief. These are the two people. Not only are they lifeless and also thieves, which I called them and I told them, I've said anywhere because I have my evidence to show for it, but that they are also people whose only prediction is that they have been tested and they have failed the paper of Nigeria. These are two tested hands who have failed categorically and vocally. If they were to be students, they would have been expelled from school for a long time ago. If they were business people, their businesses would have failed. In fact, they are business people whose businesses are failed. One used to rear cows and they never, it was a side thought at one point. Another one claimed he had a business, just three days ago, he realized that he had to increase their salary. From miserable eighteen thousand to thirty-three thousand, I asked him, do your children rely on that three thousand naira per month? That's okay, yes, that's like fifty pounds, right? Your children cannot spend thirty-three thousand naira per day, and you are insulting us by claiming that you are not paying minimum wage of thirty-three thousand. Is that how much your children pay when they go to school in London? You know, in very expensive universities and even kindergarten schools that they send them to here. So ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to go into any complex conversation with you about what is wrong with Nigeria. There's no body sitting in here, including our little brothers and sisters who are playing around, who don't know about Nigeria. But what would be dangerous and what would be unforgivable is that you met Nigeria the way it is now, you don't do something to change the objective condition of Nigeria and Nigerians. Because yesterday, we were looking, and one of attendees asked us at the meeting, he had a question. He said, how do you intend to woo people in their sixties on your side? And I said to him, with due respect and I'm sorry, I don't want to woo people on our system, you said their system on our side, they owe us. They are the ones who sold us down the river. It's the people in their sixties that sat down while Nigeria became a jungle that it is today, a failed state. So I said, sir, you owe us. So if everybody's contributing hundred pounds, you owe us two hundred pounds.
Take it back! Action!
You had to pay for your letter, you had to pay for your laziness and complacency. You owe us an apology for leaving us a nation to be like this.
I apologize.
The question.
I belong to that group.
No, your apology should be accepted in pounds. Yes. We start by doing it apologetically. So, what is there that, the question is, we must not leave this place to allow our children to ask us the same question when we turn sixty or when we're in our fifties. Already, we are not young, don't let anybody deceive you that a forty-seven-year-old guy is young. I'm forty-seven, and a lot of you are probably around my age range. You know that we are not young. You know, in the next three years, our life will change around, you know? We'll spend more time consulting with doctors, you know, than really spending time on social circles. Because that's the reality of life. So, but within the next three years, starting from next year in particular, we can actually start to have a country that we can all be going back to. I know, like most of you, that even though it is nice out here in the UK, we are tired of staying out here. If everybody is to take a poll today and say, who wants to go back to a better Nigeria? Half of this place will leave. But the irony and the paradox is that if you go to Nigeria and say, who wants to leave Nigeria? Seventy percent of Nigerians will leave Nigeria. Not more than that, you know? Because the place is not living. And people who created the Nigeria of misery, they enjoy Nigeria the way it is. So all those questions you ask them, when you see them and say, sir, but you have been to London, you see how the underground is working, they are not looking at shit like they are crazy. What is their problem with underground? You know, they don't care about underground, they like Nigeria the way it is. They like in Nigeria where people are their slaves, where they have drivers, they have cook. You know, everybody's begging for school fees, everybody's, you know, prostrated for them. That's Nigeria they want. In Nigeria you have today is Nigeria of their dream. This is the Nigeria they dreamt of. So when you are challenging them, that you want them to abandon the Nigeria of their dream, you are just wasting your time. The only way you can change their mindset is for all of us, sitting here today, to bond together and say that we are not returning back to the condition in which we found ourselves the last 58 years. And I am standing in front of, having challenged the same system, out of my forty-seven years on that, I've done it for almost thirty years, I've done it exactly twenty-nine years. Those of our colleagues who read the beautiful speech you heard here with students at the University of Davis, both was our challenge, military rule. And everybody was afraid of the military. They had, I went times in front of our university, but we fought to them for ten years and they left in 1999. You know, after they left, they brought civilians. We thought the civilians were good people, but these guys were morons, crazy people, wicked people, thieves, and they have gutted Nigeria. There's nothing almost left. I am not joking about when I tell you that Nigeria is a failed state. It's failed in every ramification. It's failed in providing education to its youth. It has failed in providing infrastructure to its people. It has failed in providing housing. It has failed in feeding, you know, the virtually population of the country. It has failed in providing jobs for a huge number of young people in the country. It has failed in providing health. It has failed in agriculture. It has failed politically, it has failed socially, it has failed culturally. Nigeria has failed in every imaginable way you can imagine for a country like Nigeria. But guess what? Even as bad as things are, whenever our people have the chance to get out of this situation, they dig themselves back into, you know, the grave. That is why the dominant conversation at all could be that you would call yourself articulated in 2018. A young person, some of them educated, would say that they want to vote for TIG and they tag themselves articulated. Or some people would say that the only way Nigeria can make it is to vote for a Buhari who has confessed that he's not even capable of running his house. But it's up to us to change that, and we can change it from wherever we are. We are lucky that technology has provided us an opportunity to participate in politics at home. The next thing is to be able to vote for people who are going to lead us, even though we are in diaspora. They admit it's impossible because they know it's not possible to bribe you with rights. Because you people have a problem of not wanting to eat. But Nigerians still have a problem of finding a place to eat. That's why there's no diaspora voting. If there was diaspora voting, as I'm sitting in, I'm standing in front of you now, I will have six million votes in the bag already. Because a lot of people, even though when they are skeptical and cynical about the situation in Nigeria, they tell us that, look, Shoré, we know that you can run this country better than Buhari and Artigo. Ah, but how are you going to win the election? Do you know how to weak? Do you have the army to help you carry ballot papers? Do you have assassins, assassinate people for you? They ask all these egregious questions of us, and you can't blame them. It is because that's the only way they understand that politics is done. But we have come to realize that we don't need to assassinate anybody. The only people that need to be assassinated are people who are going to assassinate themselves when the election is approaching or after the election, when they discover that Nigeria has moved past them. So they may have to, but we are not engaging in any bloodshed. We are bringing in ideas so that our country's political system can be governed by ideas instead of being governed by cash. So that people can accept to vote for the future instead of voting for five thousand naira, which when you divide by four years, you don't get up to the naira per day left. In fact, those who collected rags in a kitty and Shoré said, we read them, they come to us and they said the money is finished. We said, well, you should have known better. But the people you voted for are not yet done with you. They are not finished with you yet, and they won't be done with you until they finish all of you. Because you should know that in the first place, if somebody gave you five thousand naira to vote for them, it is not his money, it's your money that they stole, that they are returning part of, right, to you, crumbs. But most importantly, they must recoup back their money that they paid for you to vote for them. And when they are recouping, they are recouping with profits and interest. So it's a transaction that happened for which they are take us, you know, and give us. And those who gave you must take until you have nothing left. So ladies and gentlemen, I could stand here and tell you how things are bad at home. But the only thing to tell you now is how we would fix Nigeria. And how it is so easy and possible to fix Nigeria. As I've said repeatedly, everywhere I go, Nigeria is not complex at all. When you hear politicians saying that Nigeria is complex, they are pressing the panic button inside of you so that you make it sound as if you need special people to govern Nigeria. The question I ask myself is, if Nigeria is so complex, why is it so easy to steal from a complex system? That one man can steal one billion dollars and naturally come to nowhere else but London and buy a house and a car that he's never going to try. Buy a house that he's never sleeping. And then go back to Nigeria and steal more, and steal more. What kind of complex system is so easy to steal from? The truth is that these guys have no capability, they have no capacity. They don't have knowledge, they don't have an understanding of how the rest of the world is working. They live in the analog era, and we need to move to the digital era. And we need people who are forward thinkers, people who have ideas, people have exposure. People also have education as small as it is. Sometimes it's not a bad idea to have a West African school certificate in front of the president of Nigeria, because that is the minimum requirement. You know, if you find somebody at the age of seventy-six who cannot find the certificate, then we have a problem, right? This is a kind of deceptive leadership that has been governing the place. And it is not also untrue that they are old people. Even though we don't hold it against people that they are older, but we have a problem with old people whose ideas are also aged. We have to move them out of the way. So for Nigeria to progress, starting from now, we need you to help us move them out of the way. We need to put these guys out of business. We need to put them into permanent retirements so that we will never hear about them again. We'll never have to go to their living room to go and take permission to elect our leaders. We'll never need their endorsement again. They will never manage our industries, they will never manage our schools, they will never manage their lives. In fact, that we will never allow them to manage our spirituality and even our culture. Because all the criminals in the system, they are all connected. They are all connected. The two major political parties are not different, PDP and APC. They are connected, they are co-joined twins. They are connected, they are co-joined twins, don't take that in back. But they have different outlets that with which they confuse the public. So ladies and gentlemen, I have come here to seek your help. You know, seek your help in saying, look, if it suits you and if you believe it, that Nigeria should change. And you can believe in what we are saying, that we have been breathing life into a generational decision to change the narrative in Nigeria. Please, support us. Support us with whatever you can afford. Money, if you have a vehicle, you have a house, if you have t-shirts, you have hats, you have even what they call, you know, telephone credits in Nigeria. You know, you can donate credit to people to make calls. You can buy it from here and send it to them. What do they call the telephone, the mobile phone credit? Topo, you know, you can topo people's phone from here. We have people who are volunteering all over the place to help us, young people. This is perhaps the only hope they have for Nigeria to change and change now. If anybody is telling you that this is not our time, the person has got a problem. Because we don't have up to four years on our hands anymore. If we lose it this time, Nigeria is gone. We don't have another four years to play with. Because in another four years, the world would have moved past us. Already we are lagging behind. We are lagging behind countries like Rwanda. Yes, we are lagging behind countries like Ghana. Before, we used to have Ghana must go. Now Ghana is preparing Nigeria must go. Yes, we are lagging behind countries like even Somalia land, which is not Somalia. They are getting their ass together. Kenya, Ethiopia. These countries are doing better than, Benar Republic is doing better than Nigeria in terms of electricity. And we're saying that it is possible to have twenty-four hours electricity in Nigeria. It is possible for us to send our children to school in Nigeria. In fact, it is possible to have a Nigeria that you'll be happy to send your children to go to school in Nigeria from London. And that you will never be using Nigeria to scare your children anymore. We are losing our, if I send you to Nigeria and I say, that is what they are doing to me again. I don't want to go to Nigeria. But you can actually send your children to school in Nigeria where they will get qualitative education and also learn your language. Right? That is Nigeria we want. A Nigeria where you can go to take care of yourself. There are people who are living here in London, when they have difficult health situation, they go to India to go treat themselves. But Nigerians cannot afford to find any hospital that can treat them, you know, or properly even diagnose what is wrong with you, beyond the diagnosis of malaria and typhoid. And those are the only diagnoses you get in Nigeria. Because there are no hospitals system that can diagnose you. Right? Or that we can feed ourselves. And how do we do it? That our governors and our leaders are not more interested in buying Prado jeeps or SUVs as opposed to buying tractors so that we can till the land and feed our people. We can have food security in our own time and that we can find jobs for our timid young people. Five point something million is what we are planning within two years of taking office. And how do we do it? That we start growing electricity with renewable energy, solar energy, which is in abundance in Nigeria, that we can employ over two million people just to put it together. And the moment we have twenty-four hours electricity, the Nigerian economy will grow.
Yes.
It will grow in a way that will surprise any one of you here. Because Nigerians are innovative people. They know what to do if they have the right kind of leadership. And that some of you also can start heading home as well. And go have that life that you have always craved. Yes, it is true that we came here to the UK and the US thinking that we'll find greener pastures. Some people said, oh, you know, we are going out there to find our dreams. And since they arrived here, you have never slept. How can you dream when you're not? That is the truth. It is intentional savvy to slave, second slave of involuntary nature that we are doing here. When you own a house there, it belongs to the governor. When you own a car, it belongs to the governor. You don't own nothing. But when you go home, you own something in Nigeria that belongs to you, and you feel it. We had a brother yesterday who was with us in Manchester. He had a back pain, said, you know, my doctor said, if you go to Nigeria, your back will heal because it's always warm. Most of the time, you are miserable in cold, winter, long-winded weather. The same thing in America. This is not how you want to live your life, I can guarantee you. You know, to be bundled up twenty-four seven for six months, you know. And don't let me go into the psychological part of it, because most of the time, we are all depressed there anyways. We're not happy. So home is the place we can be happy about. But for you to be happy about Nigeria, you must build Nigeria into a happy place.
A A C, take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
So London, that's why we are here. We are here for the first time to beg you to help us take back Nigeria. Take back our country, make it a country that from next year you can be proud of. You know, you can become a country that you look at and say, hey, you know, I'm going to Nigeria next week. And your pastor don't call you up and say, you better come and do prayer and fasting before you go home. Because we don't know if you'll make it back. Yes, so please, I can't thank you enough, London. You know, it's not just this gathering that's encouraging about the United Kingdom or London in particular. Consistently, since we came here, since in fact we declared, we kept hearing from you, you know. We see you, GoFundMe, some of your accounts at home, you keep donating to us. We just want you not to stop until Nigeria is liberated. We want you to keep giving the best form of support you can, you know. The money we need to fight this battle to a conclusive end is about two million dollars. Oh, let's say two million pounds. And it's nothing, it's a drop in the bucket compared to what our opponents are going to spend. Artikul, a week after he declared, shipped over four hundred people to Dubai to have a meeting. You can imagine the ticket, you know, cost alone, and then the hotel, and then they had to drink champagne and wine, you know, and, you know. They also had to handle prostitutes all over the place. You know, that's what is, it might sound a little bit petty, but that's what leadership is about in Nigeria. And sometimes, honestly, it is difficult to stand in front of people who are abroad and start promising roads, water. It makes me feel like we have not elevated the conversation between pedestrian things, because those are things that county leaders are responsible for, not the president of Nigeria. It's not the president, it's not the prime minister of the UK that is responsible for cutting tapes of commissioning roads, every street, you know. And when the road is even still under construction, they put it out as if it's a big deal on Facebook. You go on Facebook every day, they are putting out roads that are under construction. I saw one before I came here today, and my stomach was just turning. It's the pillars that they are building of the Second Nigeria Bridge, they are putting it up. The pillars, when they haven't done anything beyond us, maybe five pillars. This is the Second Nigeria Bridge that should have been concluded some forty years ago. You are putting pictures of a few pillars out. It is because, look, these guys are saying to every one of us, they don't give a damn. Do you know how, you know they don't give a damn? When the press, when a country sits down and the minister of information says to you that he's spitting a prisoner that is legally detained for three point five billion naira in monos, you know they don't give a damn about you. When a country is there and they tell you that a snake has just embezzled thirty-six million naira, you know they don't give a fuck about you. I'm sorry to use that French word. When a leader tells you that a monkey just stole ten million naira, they don't give a damn about. They are telling you that they don't care about, they have reduced your thinking, you know, faculty to ashes. And that's where we are, that's where we must climb out of immediately now. And it is urgent that we do it, ladies and gentlemen. And that's where I will stop my speech. I know I was, you were told that I would give a beautiful speech, but it's not tonight. I'm giving a beautiful speech on the day of the swearing.
A A C, take it back!
Action!
I told you, he's going to give us a, a, well, for me, it's a very beautiful speech he has just given us now. Because he has actually opened up our minds to actually understand some issues that, you know, sometimes there's a way in Nigeria when you listen to the press and the print media or the, you know, the TV or the radio, there is a narrative that is portrayed there. If you listen to, you watch NTA news, everything about anything is about one commissioning of one road, commissioning of that, of the speech by, on a particular, a seminar speech by ministers and everything. But by the time you go out, you don't see any, no development. And in measures of research, it is very primitive at this stage of Nigeria. So we're talking about road construction in Nigeria. When we are here as residents of this country, we see how responsible governments are. How they are responsible, how you can write a petition to your councilor. And they will write so quickly, I say, oh, somebody's writing, somebody's writing a petition, a petition. But over there in Nigeria, they don't care. Whatever you say, they don't even care, whatever you say. And then for now, I consider many of us have written questions. And then I would like to give you time to go through them. But while you're going through them, I would like to call on the DG for A A C in Oyo State. So tell us about the challenges, okay, you would like to, okay. Yeah, okay, Oyo State government candidate, so he tells us the challenges in Oyo State and how he's ready to take it back in Oyo State.
A A C, take it back!
Take it back! Action!
What a wonderful speaker. He had to speak the state of affairs in my state, Oyo State. I'm not sure if anyone from Oyo State is in the room.
Sir?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I'm not sure when last you were in Oyo State. If we were to talk about Oyo State, we'll be here all night. At a government, when APC was voted in, people thought, um, this is going to be L G radio for the states. They are going to bring the kind of change that we have all dreamed of. But lo and behold, it was totally opposite to what everybody expected. Over the last twenty years, if we were to even take it from there, you see that Oyo State has regressed. Things are no longer what it used to be. I'm a product of a public school. I went to a seventh-day apprentice school in Ibadan, Loyola College in Ibadan, University of Ibadan. And if you were to look at the state of all these institutions, they are at an appalling state at the moment. Very pathetic. And we can see that our government has really done nothing in the last several years apart from embezzling money. I was with a friend who moved in from America a few years ago now. And he went to show me the house he just bought because he decided to relocate back to Nigeria and grew up in Ibadan, so he decided to make his home in Ibadan. And we were going to his house. And we are going on this, on the Norwegian road. And he said, Ego, because I'm slightly older than him, he said, look at this road. I pulled the commissioner of works, and he said to me, my road has been done. I said, Jim, I said, it's been done on paper, but not on the physical. And what has happened is that it's all embezzlement. When the current government, government met Oyo State, we had twenty-four billion minus in debt, which was left by the PDP government. Now today, Oyo State is minus one hundred and eighty-something billion in debt. And there are no developments to show for it, absolutely nothing. Apart from one or two roads in Ibadan, and a bridge at Mokola. And we cannot allow things to continue this way. That's why people like me and many others who had kind of followed Oyo Nation were to say that we've got to take this back. And in planning to take it back, I've noticed a few things that I want to address here. I always say to everyone around me in Ibadan, I say, you see, even someone who is blind will know that things are not working well. But who is ready to step out and change it? There are a few people who just like to talk about the problem all day. All they will talk about are things that are not working, this is not working, that's not working. But when it comes to fixing things, are they ready to step forward? And that's one thing we have seen with this movement. People are ready to step forward and say, we've got to take this back. We cannot allow this to go on the way it has been going. And if you look at many of the manifesto that take it back, A A C as before, which is called Spicer Hits, all the details are in there. What we've done is that for Oyo State, we've looked at the ones that are extremely relevant to the state of, to the state of affairs in Oyo State. And because we can't do everything, the president will have to push a lot of things around the country. But for Oyo State, we've got to look at what is, is, is that what is the most impactful for the people? And the number one thing is education. And intentionally, let me say this to us, please. They are intentionally destroying the education system in Nigeria. It's an intentional thing, don't think, oh, there is no money for education. About five years ago, I sat with a friend and he told me that year that as of that time, over thirty-five billion US dollar had been shipped out through CBN for education. Imagine if we were spending that money in Nigeria. And that's just the one that is through CBN, and that was not for the whole year, over thirty-five billion. And that was over five years ago. I don't know how much it is in the last two years and the last one year. So education is our first agenda for Oyo State. And our plan, which I call vision goal, is to provide quality free education of the secondary school and to make it affordable and sharing level. We've had over the situations at Lautem, the speech university owned by Oyo and Oshun, which is not working at all. And some of us who have been philanthropic in bringing things back in Oyo State, and when you have one or two students that were paying ninety thousand, now the government has moved into two sixty thousand. So it becomes even impossible to help. And it's all intentional because they are, they are bringing down a system that they have, they think it will work, like they have done in the north, which is the Almagerin system, where we now have one rich person and one million poor people, and everybody is shouting Raka in this area. And that's why it is easy for them to give someone two thousand naira and take their vote and ring their lives for four years. So education is extremely important because the more people, the more people we can get educated and informed, the less we can stand up and fight for our rights. If you and I didn't have the kind of exposure that we have today, it would be totally impossible to say we want to take it back. Is it that we just joined the status quo? And thank God for the exposure that we've had across the western nations that we've all been. Secondly, for us is that we realize that in Oyo State, the horizon boys are on the increase. You know what I call the horizon, the towns, the talks there. And most of them are in their, in their teenagers, in their teen years, sorry, they are teenagers. So we are looking at bringing a system that will re-educate our youth. And the government recently started a private technical university, which he used the current, the guy that is going to, the guy that they are targeting for the governorship in Oyo State, to pull the money out of the central bank. And instead of being something with the money and improving maybe the current institutions that are there, they went to open a private, old, technical university with government money. So one of the things we are going to focus on is how we're going to retrain our youth, get them back in employment, vocational training and everything that is possible. And by God's grace, I believe we are able to do that. And thirdly, we're going to look at the small businesses. And one of the things that we have lacked in Nigeria is electricity. We had when our president was talking about that. I know if we have electricity tomorrow, Nigeria will work. I always say to people that even when God created the heavens and the earth, he saw everything was void. And without, the first thing God said was, let there be light. And I don't understand why our leaders do not understand why we need electricity in Nigeria. They only think they are the ones, we think they are, you know, they are high friends to houses, that they should have electricity. Sometimes when I go down to the street where my mother lives, it's like you are going into darkness. it's like you are going into darkness. And I wonder, why can't they see this? And I believe that if we are able, if the federal government led by Omoyele Shure, by then is able to provide electricity, the small businesses and for many people who are involved in economy, they realize that when you get the small businesses working, that state or that nation will work. So that's one of the things, because you have so many traders in Oyose State, so many. And the first thing that we wanted to work on is agriculture. And one of our vision goals is to make Oyose State the food basket of Nigeria. We have two fifty, over two fifty thousand hectares of arable land that is still unfamed. Not yet tapped into. The current dispensation, the current government, about four, five years ago, they spent so much money, unbelievable amounts of money, they imported tractors and all sorts of equipment, but nobody knows we are those things there. And it's unfortunate that all these things are happening and many of us are keeping quiet. This is our nation, this is our state, this is our city, and it's about our lives and the lives of our children. Some of us may say, oh, I've been lucky, I've been able to get my children, my family out. Like someone says to me, if I have my way, I'll remove all of my people from Nigeria. But like you heard, you come here, it's another form of slavery. It's best to get our nation working. It's best to have an economy that thrives. It's best to have a place where we can call home, where we can all look back and say, I am an Ebadon man and I'm proud to be one. I am from Edo State and I'm proud to be one. So we have a work in our hands. And the first step is to support the visions that the president of Nigeria next year, I believe so much in him. And that's why I'm behind a hundred percent. Is to first support him. I know many of us will not be able to come to Nigeria and be part of this problem. But there's a way we can be part of this struggle with our parents' study. We can support. What I will ask everyone to do, for those who believe in this dream, those who want to see the Nigeria of their dreams, those who want to see maybe not even their children, maybe their niece's children or their cousin's children grow in an environment where there's safety and where there's progress, is do something for us here. Not just give today, but give continuously for the time till this election process is over. Not just the one-off, because the one-off is good, please. We are asking for that, we believe you are able to do that. But you see, what I'm asking is for you to do a bit more than just one-off giving, to give continuously for the period of the election and support the need to bring a new Nigeria. Let me say this to us, please, and I hope you understand this. If we don't have the right people and the right person as the president of Nigeria, Nigeria is doomed. Guari can't do anything. In two thousand and three, I was opportunity to go to Abuja after a very long time because the first time I went to Abuja was nineteen eighty-nine and then I went in two thousand and three. And I made a call to my wife and I said, if one doesn't have God, you think you are dead, that you are failed, because I happened to know someone that was very close to Atiku. And I saw what they were talking about, how they were looting Nigerian folks. And these guys have been out of power for so long, imagine if they come back. They are going to come back with a vengeance. They are going to steal Nigeria dry. So now, you see, Guari is not the answer. When people say, oh, Guari is the only one that can lead Nigeria out of the problem. And I look at her and say, wow, he must be stupid. What about you? Can't you do it? Can't you yourself do it?
Take it back.
Guari, why not you as a person? At forty, he was a governor in a state. Why not you? And this is a man that has spent, how many years? When you are ready, my president, please tell me, because I can't go on and on. This is a man that has spent more than half of the time in hospitals all over.
UK here.
UK here. So why is it him that can save Nigeria? And but definitely I'll tell you that Atiku is not the one. The only option that we have to drive Nigeria forward is Omoyele Shure.
Take it back.
That's what matters. Someone asked me, but he doesn't have experience. I say, what, the ones that you claim that have experience, what have they prospered? What have they given us? What have they given us? They have messed things up further. So let's ask someone, yes, let's ask someone, yes, I agree. Let's ask someone who doesn't have it. At least they will do something better than those who have experience and they have messed us up and they have killed us and they have bring the life of our children. So my appeal to everyone listening to me and to everyone here. One, not just the one-off giving, please, the continuous giving. Two, we all have families at home. You all have people that maybe they are on your payroll. And let me say this to you. The person that feeds you controls your destiny. So talk to them that, your BBC, this is the person I want you to vote for. Please, let's do this. We've got to be intentional about this change. We've got to be intentional about our support for this. So let's tell them, please make sure this is the person I want you to vote for. Because this is the reason why I'm continuing to support you. And as we do this, before we know it, I can tell you, the Nigeria of our dreams will surely show before us. Thank you very much.
Action. Ladies and gentlemen, before I give the Lagos state gubernatorial candidate a chance to talk, and I've just been told now that in Edo State, we are organizing a one-million-man match. It's organized by one of the members of the one other group, Gobon Sins.
Take it back. AAC is. Take it back.
So he's the one organizing it. He is talking about it, but he said the time and the time of the match, he's going to announce it and then everybody, and he plans to organize this match in many states of the country. Because he has been organized, he has been represented by the action of our president, Omoyele Shure. If this man can go around the world, around the states, what about we, you and I? And he's ready to do that and we're going to give you all our support. Thank you very much. Really, before, my president is ready now, but if you want, got anything to add? This is our Lagos state, the next governor of the state.
Take it back. Action.
Wow, I'm overwhelmed. Thank you, Lagos. Thank you, UK. Thank you for support. Really appreciate everyone. Who do these two us? Lagos, Lagos. I don't want to go, uh, take too much time because I just came back from Lagos recently. I was there for forty days. I've been a very proud of Lagos. I just want to comment, my president, thank you so much, sir. He has tried a lot. I don't know how he did it to go around all Nigeria. I'm having body ache right now. Yeah, first and foremost, thanks everyone. I don't know how we allow these people to rule us continuously. They were there as a military man. Now they came back again as a civilian, a citizen of people. We allow them to rule us again. And yet we could not do anything about it to stop them. That's tough. Enough is enough. Lagos state was being monopolized by one man, Tino Bo. Who is Tino Bo? Why people tell me, oh, Tino Bo? I said, no, come on, it's nobody. If we all can stand up and come together, we can defeat him with his money. He has bought every town in Lagos with his money. And they could not say even a single truth. How long are we going to do this for? Lagos is being polluted with every waste, bad roads. I bought a car recently in Lagos. The car did not last me five days because of bad roads. No train station, no good train, no housing, no good school. And yet we still want to vote these people. He has been in power for nineteen years. He didn't do nothing. We only requested for four years to transform Lagos. And we're saying Lagos is next to London, is a lie. Lagos could not stand Daglan, back in Daglan alone. We know all that. Tower, Amlet, we know all these things. So how long are we going to stand on this face and say, oh, it's none of our business? We don't care. You and I can afford a bag of rice. What about people cannot afford a cup of rice? How they survive? How they live? Please, my dear Londoner, brothers and sisters, we know how it works. We are in this system. We know how it works, good system. Please, Joy, I don't want to take much of your time. This is a revolution. I'm not a politician like my president and everyone else here. We just feel like enough is enough. I'm frustrated in Nigeria like everyone here. We are tired and sick. Please, we can do it. Good roads, good hospital, transportation. Can you imagine it could do to VI, whatever, to other side? They didn't make use of those waterworks at all. They can make use of transportation. Waterworks, yeah, sure. And the road traffic alone is killing in Lagos. In London, I can go everywhere within, I can go ten places in London within six hours. You and I know that. Far and near, over the metro, whatever, to from and other, 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 other. But in Lagos, believe me, you can't go two places in Lagos. In Lagos alone, you can't go two places. It's not possible. You'll be locked down in traffic. And then, please, Lagosian, believe in this mandate. We can do it. We will set you free come twenty nineteen. Please, everybody rise and join this movement. We have intellectual, vibrant mind. And God so good, our ideology along with Omoyele Shure. They must suit for the truth, so why can't we join him? Please, wherever you have little, small supporters, please. We appreciate it. We can take it back from them. Believe me, if money could collect Jona Tanda in two thousand and fifteen, how much more now? Who is Guari? The man that will not even look after his own house and brilliant us anyhow he wants. He doesn't even least care about our lives. And look at the people around him, Tino Bo of all people, Abmati of all people, Okoro Cha, paying four hundred pounds to, for his son-in-law to have a gonopatia, whatever. It's so sad. If somebody could spend that much, tell me how much he's going to do in the office. Please, I don't have Godfather. I'm saying openly, I don't have anybody, I have God. But please, we can deliver Nigeria as a whole. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your support. Come twenty nineteen, I believe we're going to have Omoyele Shure as the new Nigeria president.
Ladies and gentlemen, just a few minutes now. I think the problem of Lagos state is very pathetic. The next fifty, for the next fifty years, the next governors of Lagos state, they are already lined up. They've already lined you up. If you don't do it, if you don't fall along the line, they will just take you out. I can remember when Guari came into power in nineteen eighty-three. They cancelled the metal line projects for Lagos state in nineteen eighty-three. In two thousand and eighteen, the same man came back to Lagos state to come and open a bus stop. I mean, and there was some fear that, okay, this kind of a bus station in Lagos state. Thirty-three, thirty-six years after, and people were doubting it. We should have gone beyond having a bus stop in Lagos state. Bus station in Lagos state. So, I mean, we need to, let Lagos make the difference. Thank you very much. So our president has actually gone through all the questions and is going to answer them one by one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I received a few questions here and the questions are good, I have to tell you. And I will try the best to answer the questions as quickly as possible and as fast and as precisely as you have asked them. I can tell you that we, what we need is for ten thousand Nigerians, I mean, all over the world, home and abroad, to just support us with two hundred dollars each or two hundred pounds. That's a two hundred pounds.
I've done it.
Yes. And the moment we get to that. Thank you very much. The moment we do that, we will have the money we need to fight this government. We will have the money we need to answer your questions, not on paper now, but with ideas and on the ground. We will have the money we need to construct two hundred thousand, not your money now, but in being in office, we will be at the place where we can use our resources to build growth, to take Lagos back. You know, it is very true that Lagos is a pathetic state, you know. And part of the reason why I got upset and decided to run for president is partially Lagos. Because I know that Lagos's future has been engaged for another fifty years. And if we are not careful, Lagos's future will be mortgaged for another hundred years. The people who are running Lagos, they have sold Lagos beyond their own lifetime. And the same thing applies to the nation of Nigeria. They have mortgaged the future of Nigeria into a time that is beyond their own lifespan. And we must take back our country so that some of these people, with due respect, the moment we remove the feeding bottle from their mouth, they will start dying off one after the other. Yes, a lot of them are sick though, physically sick, mentally sick. You know, some of them are spiritually sick. Because if it is not sickness, how can somebody go and buy a sports car and forget the road on which to drive? There was one I saw on Facebook where the man was trying to drive a car out of his garage. He then needed a plank to put on. I said, how did the car get into the garage? This mental and spiritual problem, agreed. So I go to your question and the first question here says, "What measures are you putting in place to tighten your security? We don't want you to take things for granted." I hear this all the time, which is good. I appreciate it that people care about me. What I'll say and my response is that I won't discuss security issues in public. Whatever I can do to tighten my security, we are doing it. We can improve upon it if you support us very much. But this is not the security issue. Everybody in Nigeria is insecure. I say to people in Nigeria, when they come to me and say, "Are you not afraid of death?" I say, "Are you people not dead?" Most of them are just waiting to be buried. They are dead and people have been buried alive here anyway. Why are you afraid of death? The worst that can happen to any human being is to live under the condition under which you live in Nigeria, that is death. Other countries where I judge people who live under a dollar per day as people who are dead or in the back of decks. It's a state of emergency that they are living in. So don't worry about security. We're doing our best to be secure. But the most important thing that can secure us is good conscience. And we have plenty of it at our disposal. Now I'll tell you something. If Nigerian police is protecting you, you are good at death. It's like, it's whether sometimes we even have an umbrella back that you can throw, or a kidnapper that you can throw. You see that there was a place we went to in Yavah, you know, through Larry. We were held up. We had, the guy who invited us is from the UK. He had six mobile policemen. Area boys held us up. Policemen were telling us, ah, find them something else. We're gone. They had six AK forty-seven guns with them. They came to us and saw a guy, talked to them. After we left the place, we discovered that the police and the area boys are working together. They were the ones who told them, they gave them a wink, that it's time to hold us to ransom. I'm telling you, buzz wink, they helped us for thirty minutes. I told them, I'm not the one who stole my kids' money. And I never gave a dime. You know, they said, ah, which kind of president are you going to be? You are stingy. I said, no, I'm about to fix your future. The people you should hold for ransom, they are not holding them to ransom. We still there, you know, they call, the guy made some money available to. We still there, you know, they call, the, the guy made some money available to them. We had, they came to me, they kept coming to me in the car. You are the one, you are, we are holding, I said, you are not holding, you are holding your future. If you like, when you are tired, you let me go, and when they were tired, they let us go. But the point I'm making to you is that to have six policemen, who are telling you that you should go and set you, the area boys. The area boys were not even carrying protein bottles, they were just, I don't know, going anywhere. So sometimes, don't be relying too much on Nigerian security, you know? Many songs have been compiled for you towards your campaign. Any possibility, these songs are put together and separated around stores, markets, shopping centers. It's true, we are working on putting them on the CDs, but we already put them on SoundCloud, so if you go to soundcloud.com/awore2019, you find, we have over fifteen songs now that have been made for us for free. People are making, they are delivering their talents, time, energy, and everything that they can give us. Yes, the one is already on MTN, it's the one that is, uh, the Kegat, uh, one. Where is the DJ here, maybe he could play some of those nice songs for us? Uh, how well coordinated is the effort at home in terms of readiness to spread the message once campaign starts? Efforts are being made, we have people who are already, even as we speak, doing grassroots campaigning. Uh, I don't know if some of you are following us last week, we went to Obafemi Awolowo University, Elif. Who the hall was jam packed. We actually went also into Elif itself, and people were very happy to receive us, right? Because I saw one, uh, question about the only of people, of who I heard is in town for Bakarade as well. Uh, how do we solve the corruption problem that has, uh, eaten deep in our, into our INEC? From the last source, they already know the next president is due to bribe people to iron it. Let me tell you, the party that bribed the most in two thousand and fifteen lost the election. Uh, I said to people, what is the job of INEC? INEC is there to win the election for the ruling party. We are here to make sure that we win the election for the people of Nigeria. And it is eternal vigilance that will make us win. It's not INEC, INEC cannot help us, but the moment they come on that thing, you would tell your people to take a picture of the results. Make use of technology, we are planning to use drones, the moment they hear that we plan to use drones, they are now banning drones in Nigeria. Whether they like it or not, we figure out how to put drones in the, in airspace, that day of the election, nobody can stop us. Nobody can stop an idea whose time has come. I am interested in, uh, I mean, to understand your plan with Nigeria's economic relationship with China, this is a question about China. The import-export deficit costs millions, uh, costs us millions, most importantly negative. Industrialization, the textile industry, also the import of illegal catfish products to Nigeria, E G drugs. How do you plan to give Nigeria a better economic development and protect market standard? Thank you so much, Happy, for this question. A question about China keeps coming up, and a question you asked yourself is that, how did China become a weak power? They decided a long time ago that enough is enough with their incompetent leaders. And they started growing their human resources. Today, you know, when it was time for China to become communist, they were communists. When they could be socialist, they were socialist. When it was time for capitalism, they became capitalist. And they kept making products, even though their products started to as fake products. But over time, because they kept making it, they have now been able to compete with even better countries around the world. China now has its own Chinese cars, China is about to come out with their mid-range jets very soon, right? So, we are complaining about China because we are lazy, we have lazy leaders who are not innovative to turn our own population, the same way China turned his own population into his own advantages, and that's what new leaders will do in Nigeria. We have two hundred billion people, out of the two hundred billion, over seventy percent of them are young people. That's about one hundred and forty-seven million people, my math is still alright, so I didn't quite see that. Yes, one forty million people. If we put them to work the same way China did it during the revolution, we would also have a Nigeria that is able to be, having, they will be talking about Nigerian products too. Nigeria has got the whole of Africa to conquer. But because Nigeria cannot even govern itself, Nigeria cannot conquer the United Republic. Yes, so by the time we get it right, and we start producing, we get it on a game of production, we will be able to compete with China, we can complain about China for now for eternity. Even if China leaves Nigeria alone, other countries will come and take over. Because there's a void to be filled in Nigeria. Like I said earlier, you go to Ghana, Ghana has one of the best airports in, in Africa to date. Senegal has the best airports in Nigeria. If you look at internet three days ago, to cross the border from Rwanda to Congo, they have digital fingerprints to cross the border. Nigeria cannot boast of a kiosk and border. In fact, you are talking about border, go to the Nigerian airport, Mohammed, uh, wait around Mohammed International Airport. Those of us that just came on Beijing, uh, Atlantic three days ago, the pilots announced, this is not a joke, I was inside the plane. He said, I cannot power on the AC. Because when the plane, plane is on the ground, he uses an external generator to power the air conditioning system. He says, they couldn't, they only have one, and when we couldn't leave, he said, well, I've asked them to bring a second one so that I can power the engines of my plane. He said, but knowing Nigeria, that's what the pilot said, knowing Nigeria, this might take a while. You know, and behold, it took us an hour before we could depart. We are now late because they couldn't find a second generator to give to the, the jet, the pilot who was flying four-engine jet, the A three forty. That is Nigeria for you, you are not even going about, you haven't gone into the toilets at the airport. You haven't passed through at night trying to get on the plane. You are one of the, can Nigeria afford bobs to put on the roof? Somebody is investing money for bobs, and airports in Nigeria. Nigeria is, is such a bad shape. Let's stop complaining about China, the moment Nigeria gets it right, other countries around the world will respect Nigeria. But as long as you don't get it right, China will control your life, Ghana will control your life, America is doing his own. Everybody is there to fill the voids, because we don't have leadership. I say to people, even those, uh, European and American, I mean, sorry, Europeans and Americans, the moment they find new leaders in Nigeria, they will also change the team that is dealing with Nigeria. But right now, anybody can send a bosom to be an ambassador in Nigeria, he will walk into the office of the president that I've been dictating to. Have you ever seen the ambassador of Nigeria going around telling people who to vote for in the UK? Ambassador of America is one on two, he said, ah, you have to vote for this person, this is the way to vote. You go to the European ambassador, they are kings, but we cannot find a Nigerian ambassador who even attends to passports here in London. Because we don't have leadership, we have to admit that, and we must get it right with leadership before we can be putting our mouth everywhere. China, we can abuse China how we like, but they don't have textile industry, they will bring in their own textile. And when they bring in their own textile, it will be sustained that you have a custom there that is even telling the man where to pass the customer the textile shoe. The Nigerian immigration service helps to bring in legal experts into the country to take jobs that Nigerians can take. But you know the immigration policy of America and the UK? The only way they will take an external person is if they cannot find a local who can do the job in the other country. But there are people in Nigeria who are brought in to come and sweep the floor of companies, yes, in Nigeria. Are you saying that you cannot find a Nigerian who know how to sweep? This is completely nonsensical, but it's leadership, 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 leadership. How do you intend to reach the rational local people to convince them to your side? Again, this is a question we answered before, local people are there for us, but we will not be able to get to every local person. That's where we need you, apart from your funds that you can support us with. Most of you are the social security departments of your families and your villages. They ask you to do bar code, tell them, vote to my candidates. They ask you to sponsor wedding, give them a condition too. All this was, we haven't been giving them condition, sending money. It is time to give them condition, and I tell you it works. Last time, our problem was how to get people to have PVC. And Nigerians across the world started making PVC ownership as a condition for sending money. Now there are twelve million new voters, yes, courtesy of your efforts. You should clap for yourself. Now that you have PVC, let them know, look, we have reached a point where we have to take very firm decision. Tell anybody that if you vote for any of these guys that are destroying, I don't send the money to you anymore. Still in the country that you created, but if you want us to be friends, vote for the right candidate. You can use your influence, call five people, ten people, you can call the traditional ruler of your place. We went to Ondo State last week, and we were surprised pleasantly in a place called Ikale, to find all, all the traditional rulers in the kingdom. And everybody was asking us, how did we get all these traditional rulers? Because if you don't have money, they don't show up at event. It turns out that it's one of the sons of the traditional rulers who practically threaten his father. He said, look, if you don't bring all the traditional rulers today, like you are the chairman of traditional rulers in here, they are not hearing from me anymore. And this is, this is, one of the places, the place was jam packed. Jam packed, the state government was calling the, they were calling the area that, how did Shwere bring traditional rulers together? Because it costs a lot of money to, they will give their transportation money. He was one guy to call his father, because most of the traditional rulers have their children living abroad. And the children are saying to him, look, this is how the countries are working. You are traditional ruler wearing a baddha every day, going to Apuré or going to Abuja. If the country is better, you don't need to go and beg for, you don't need to become beggars in your country. And that is changing, I'm saying you can change the mindset of people at home. Just one of you can get thirty people to vote for the right candidate. Use that leverage as well. So someone is asking me, he said, is it true that you didn't accord the only of people the respect he deserves? You know, this question, this question I've answered a million times, respect is reciprocal. I'm not apologetic about it, I was invited by the only of people. I go and visit his palace, and went there, spent three hours, I was not attended to. And I said to myself, if I was Atticus, I wouldn't have been treated like that. If I was Bouari, they wouldn't have treated me like that. And just to know that our traditional rulers are discriminating in respect. When the Prince of Wales went to Nigeria, they, they summoned all of them to come and meet him in Abuja. Yes, the one in Ghana waited in his palace, they went and met him. But our traditional rulers went and sat beside, behind Chas, what's the, 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 Charles? Prince Charles, and the man was having a good time, all our traditional ruler, they queued up behind him. For if it is Shware, they are saying that you're going to frustrate for traditional ruler. Any traditional ruler that is looking for respect? So we have, we've, we've, we've reached that, and we have resolved the issue about Tifan. We need to move on to resolving Nigeria's problem. Nigeria's problem is not about how well we can frustrate, it's about how well we can stand together. The second question is that, is presidential ambition placed, can you see it as an alternative? I don't see how a presidential ambition can fail, you know? And I've said Nigeria needs a president, not a senator, at this time. So, and those people who feel like they are only able to become senators, they are welcome to our party to join. You can be a senator, you can be a local governor councillor, under our path, there's room for everybody. If you're, if you think your vanguard ambition is not beyond senate, you are welcome to become a senator. Like somebody said, yeah, I think it was, uh, our governorship candidate from Washington State. Instead of questioning whether somebody should go to councillor or president, why don't you do it yourself? Majority of you can do a better job than Bouari, you know? There's nobody in this room that I've met who cannot speak better than Bouari, who cannot communicate better than him, who definitely in my view can govern Nigeria better than, so do not internalize any inferiority complex. Every Nigerian is entitled to be president. The fact I think that they have lowered the barrier to becoming president because of their incompetence. That's true. Yes. How do you plan to address the shambolic state of our healthcare system? We are taking, we have to take it back, yes, thank you. The healthcare system in Nigeria don't exist anymore. Let that as a starting point, and the way to look at this is to recreate a brand-new healthcare system in Nigeria. But that is predicated on access for all. Nigeria can afford to provide healthcare to all the citizens of Nigeria. And we have the resources, and I have said this several times, don't let anybody deceive you that Nigeria cannot take care of its people. Because you know why, every year, we spend two billion dollars in India to take care of our people. That's those who can afford it. Two billion dollars, you can imagine what it would do inside of Nigeria to provide healthcare for the people of Nigeria. It is possible, and it's doable, and we must do it, but we must build it by way of investment, it must be deliberate investment in healthcare. What is A B A C going to do? We have said to even start with, first year in office, as soon as we are sworn in, we would hire one hundred and sixty thousand head workers to fund it to everywhere Nigeria. So that even if it's something as simple as getting your blood pressure measured from time to time, we will do it. So that doctors are not telling you based on your looks that you have malaria, and based on your lethargic state, upgrade it to typhoid. Those are the only two diseases that I know in Nigeria, either you have malaria or typhoid, you know? There is no other diagnosis, even when you are dying, you say it's in second grade of, they just keep upgrading it, upgrading it until you die. I'm not joking, but you go around the country, you know that people have, you know, health issues, they have, you know, heart issues, they have cancer, people have kidney diseases, they have, there, in the whole of Nigeria, the health minister said, there's no functioning, what's the, the kidney, uh, dialysis machine? In Nigeria, country of two hundred million people, no functioning, you know, universities, the teaching hospital has kidney dialysis machine. In Nigeria, we only have them in the private hospitals, and you cannot afford it. So a lot of people, the moment you have a kidney issue, is as good as death. The moment you have liver issues, you are good at, the moment you have cancer, forget it. Because first, they won't be able to detect or diagnose it. If they detect or diagnose anything close to cancer, they will just refer you to your spiritualist. Doctors will be telling you that, even when I'm sick, oh, my doctor, we can, our pastor, he killed me. Doctors will be telling you that, they'll be referring you to the barbarous, it's messed up. But guess what? There are Nigerians out there who are willing to come and help us for free in the country. There are Nigerian doctors who have retired and still have ten more years to give, but they don't have a place to go to. They don't have a system that can even accommodate them. You know, to insult Nigeria, the Minister of Health recently said that, why is everybody trying to be a doctor? My tailor is a doctor, so that's why so much doctors just be doing tailor. Right? That is the mindset there. I went to your state, our governorship for Aspirant State, and met the Minister of Communication at the radio station. That one is pathetic, those are the kind of characters that Bouari is parading as, and that's why the situation is hopeless. How can you help Nigerian innovators, brilliant people? I've said it, I'm repeating here, there will be an office of a chief innovator for the presidency of Nigeria as soon as we assume office. Somebody who can hold around people who have innovations that we can invest in, right? Nigeria has become an innovation hub even without government intervention. Yes, Nigeria has its own version of PayPal as we speak, Waterway is even better than PayPal. They have their own GoFundMe. It is innovation of Nigerians that is powering the country, otherwise the country would have failed completely. Just young Nigeria, some of them are from here, they came to school here, went back home. They are struggling every day, but they don't have a country that can support their brilliance and their aspiration and innovation. If you bring that innovation to Nigeria, they will tell you to take it back. And if you don't take it back, they will steal it from you.
That was my question, sorry. Um, in Nigeria, I was thinking, would you have like other department as office within your?
Office of the president, yes. You see, engineering is just not engineering, and that's why we say innovation, a chief innovation officer. Who can manage all of this? Who can harness all of this innovation, whether they have chemical and, you know, technology in any area. And, you know, kind of filter there and let the government invest in innovation. You know, one product, you know, one properly innovated product of Nigeria can become one of the biggest earners.
Like I had an idea which I, you know, I have to.
Just, just hold on to the idea, whatever you say here, they will steal it. They will steal my ideas.
Facebook was very interesting, but of course I have no finance.
Just, just hold on, just hold on to the idea. The last three questions before we go into fundraising is from Dikin Agahor. As, you know, he should talk for me, he's been very supportive. This wife, Debbie, who's sitting next to you, has promised to raise money for us like help. But Dikin has got a lot of questions for me. Dikin, some of your questions I have to be taking my silence. They're so long, you know, they look like those questions we used to answer. But I'll, I'll, I'll try and answer them and, because they're very, very, very important questions. Uh, what does you have regarding setting up states, uh, focus working groups in the diaspora? Who will talk with cascade awareness by replicating this with family, friends and other, who can influence awareness locally? What Dikin is saying is that, apart from supporting us directly, some of you have states that you prepare about. You can also help us fund our stakeholders. Like Dikin has helped us recently to set up an office in Edo State, we need city in Katitola. And with that contacting me, I found out that the main posters are building from Okada all the way to Asaba. We have posters in Edo State. And we have to shout out to our people in Edo State, they are so, so supportive.
Yeah. We're in same group.
Yeah, same group. So Edo has been very, 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 very supportive, you know. In Edo State, they call me Shwere, Shwere, you know, but I love it, I'm just joking. But it is the kind of spirit that must be replicated everywhere. In Edo State, in Shokoto State, in Quara State, in Kogi State. Yes, I mentioned Quara, because part of reasons why I got involved in this is that I met Quara in a pathetic state. Quara is owned by one person, the hostess. But Quara today is changing based on the interventions we have in Quara. We are breaking the stranglehold of the Sarr kings over the people of Quara. And we hope that the people of Quara will not give up. The same way we hope that the people of Lagos will not give up. The same way we hope that the people of your state will not give up. We need to break these guys, you know, we need to break these states away from all these individual landlords. Who are, who are holding the destinies of a lot of people at the state level to ransom. And the same thing should apply across Nigeria. You see, there's a cabal in the country that's holding the country to ransom, that's holding the progress of Nigeria to ransom. And our own solution to it is that we are not going to only sanitize Nigeria. We would insecticide Nigeria and our own insecticide we call Cabaside. We will finish all the cabals once and for all. And ensure that Nigeria becomes a respectable country that can take care of these people, these citizens. And can take care of the hope and aspiration of the continent of Africa. Uh, since I congratulate you, uh, for creating awareness of your campaign via social media. However, there are many potential voters whom who do not have access and therefore do not have vital information regarding Spicer Heat. What is your strategy to reach there with less than three months election? Dikin, uh, the truth is that we are reaching out, no doubt. Uh, but one thing people should understand is that we are not allowed to come, I mean, to campaign yet until November eighteen. So there's an embargo on campaigns, we can't put jingles in radio stations, we can't put, uh, slots, other slots in TV stations. And we cannot do rallies, but as soon as the campaign embargo is lifted, we will reach every no can't plan of Nigeria. As an aspirant, I did thirty states within three months in Nigeria. Within over. Within over one hundred and fifty events. And outside of Nigeria, we've done over thirty events. They've only visited almost twenty something states. I mean, if you are campaigning for the president of Nigeria, you end up in Australia, then you know that you're serious. You know, I just did Australia, four cities in Australia, uh, recently. I did Brisbane, Melbourne, Sydney and Perth, you know. And I'll tell you, Nigerians all over the place, all over the world are pumped up, they're pumped up. In, uh, in, in, uh, Australia alone, we raised twenty thousand Australian dollars. As soon as we go home, they kept sending us t-shirts, posters and more money. You know, people are really, really buying into this dream, they are buying into our ideas and aspirations. And we can't just wait, we can't afford to fail. That's why I, you know, for me and for a lot of us, and I'm sure for you, failure is not an option. It's not, you know, losing the election is not an option. And we understand that we can win this election, that's the reason why we are very generous in reaching out to you. You know, so many of us will never ask for help, we, we are afraid to even, we are too shy. But in this case, we will do everything to get the help we need so that you can see a different Nigeria that is possible during your lifetime. That is what is disturbing me here, you know, the simple things that you take for granted, roads, you know. Even sanitation, like ability to use a toilet in the, in the ministry in Nigeria is not possible, you know. It's not, you can't go to a federal ministry in Nigeria and use their toilets. You cannot go to any government-owned school and use their toilet. Yes, there are no public toilets in most places, you know, even the so-called Lagos that have invested billions in. There's no way in Lagos that you can proudly use a toilet, if it's not a privately owned hotel or eat. It's, it's terrible. So we will, you know, we need you to be able to, you know, advertisement alone for sixty seconds. In some stations, as much as millions of naira. Do you know that since we started, we have not raised up to a hundred million naira? But with the little we have raised, we have become the most popular political party in Nigeria today. Aeneid just gave out today that out of ninety-one political parties, only fifty-six of them are able to participate in the election. Out of the twenty-three newly registered political parties, we are the only one. And the only ones that, I will tell you without looking back, that is notoriously popular in Nigeria. We look at it as, ah, those taking back people, don't mess with them, you know. It's, it's become a sing-song in Nigeria, it's become an empowerment movement. There are people, you know, even policemen, when we see them on the road, they stop us. And that's, we present that to not allow me. At the airport, he used to disturb me, now they escort me to the airport. Every series we have now, we have to fight for it, you know. We are not, we are not apologetic, there was a time if we got to the airport, we start fighting from the gates. But now, they say, ah, you know, it's, uh, you see people now, you take it back, you let them pass. Yes, and we have been passing very well. But the, the thing is that, don't be under any illusion that they won't come after us. You know, the more we each grow that to power, the more they will become also potential to push back. So apart from giving money, uh, also know that you may have to embark on serious fight for us. Because they will go after us as we become more and more popular and becomes more obvious to them that we are going to certainly take it back next year. The last question here is, uh, from sales Dikin. He said, wherever there's unity, there is strength. How do you intend to ensure that all of those within the party movement are unified? And you can therefore focus on the political force required to take it back? Uh, Dikin, this one, I would say that we have to do this internally. This is a party internal affair, we will discuss it on how best to bring everybody in that same group. We need a good job, uh, working together. As you know, before we came to this London event, there were some disagreements. But everybody is, uh, back on board, this is a full house, you know. This camera man, you want, you want, you want to show their faces, great people of London. Take it back!
Action!
Take it back!
Action!
A A C!
Take it back!
The beauty of what we are doing here is that we are not alone, you know. I don't know how many people are watching, uh, do you know how many people are watching?
Six hundred and eleven now.
Yes, six hundred and some people are watching, that is a country without internet, you know. This, I'm, I'm telling you, people are, they are buying, they are, they go and borrow internet to watch us. Because this is their hope of a final liberation from the oppressive class in Nigeria. Everybody is on board with us, our parents are on board, our mothers are on board with us, our fathers are on board with us. Old people are on board with us, poor people are on board with us. In fact, recently, rich people have indicated that they want to defend Nigeria. Because with all their wealth, they cannot sleep. Uh, and we have told them that in Nigeria, if you let Nigeria be, you people can also have rest. But as long as Nigeria is like this, every rich man is a poor man, yes. Until everybody in Nigeria gets their deal, the money you think you have will not take, will not give you the rest of mind that you are, you need. So it's in, it's in their own interest that Nigeria is a better country. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. I will hand over back to the M C so that we can go into the business of the night. And on that occasion, I will also appeal to those who may not be able to attend this event tonight. That there are other means that you can use to contribute to us, right? We have a, uh, an account in Lagos, the Zenni Bank is, uh, one zero zero six zero two three eight seven one. Some of you have donated directly to it. And on GoFundMe, we are gofundme.com slash Shwere twenty nineteen. On GoFundMe, we have raised over ninety-four thousand dollars as of today. And we can reach hundred thousand, but our final destination is two million dollars on GoFundMe. We are raising money transparently to defeat the old guard. The advantage about donating transparently is that anytime they see more money GoFundMe, they get hypertensive, you know. Because that is for them, one of them go on GoFundMe and say, how much have they raised? And they discover that we are raising more money. You not only are you giving us money, you are helping us to make a statement. On the desire of Nigerians, on the unity of Nigerians to defeat these old cargos who are holding Nigeria to ransom out. Who have made it impossible for the country to experience prosperity and any form of development. Nigeria must be removed from the state of arrested development from now on. Thank you so much, everyone.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I think, uh, Comrade Shwere has given us great, I mean, good answers to most of the questions that we, uh, we, we've asked tonight. And it's used to that because everywhere he goes, Nigerians always ask questions, they want to know, is it possible? Can we actually do it? And it's an encyclopedia of answers. And if you give them the answer that I think we are well satisfied tonight, uh, about the answers he has given. But tonight, as a twist to your question of tonight, because I don't know whether you experienced it. In charge, you tried to ask him the question. And one of the children that performed with him said, I don't ask him the question, I say just hold on. Yeah, so, uh, the promises or promises.
Go ahead, take it away. Wow. Please, uh, give him a round of applause. Promise has asked us, asked me, said, how are you going to make Nigeria a better place for us to live? That question is the promise. And I'm going to answer that question with a promise. And, uh, the promise is to make Nigeria a better place for not only the people in Nigeria to live. But people who want to live in Nigeria to be able to live in. One promise, I'm going to use this opportunity to tell us or tell you our manifesto, which is called Spicer Heat. That's the acronym for it. One is to provide twenty-four hours security for Nigeria and Nigerians so that nobody gets killed. Or nobody gets kidnapped from their school like they did to Chibok girls. Or that nobody is kidnapped, robbed or is endangered and at the mercy of criminals. Both those who are on the street and those who are in government. Second is to provide twenty-four hours electricity for Nigeria. Nigeria don't have this kind of electricity you are saying. So that your friends after school can do their homework, you know. And they can go to grade schools and learn the same way you are probably learning, the opportunity they don't have now. Number three is to provide infrastructure in our country so that our people can drive on nice roads. And when you go with daddy next time to Nigeria, daddy will not be afraid to drive you to their hometown. And ask grandma to come and see you in a hotel in Lagos. You want to be able to drive with daddy and you know that smoke and without endangering your life and that of mommy and that of precious, your brother, who I met tonight. And, uh, number three is to fight corruption so that they don't steal the money that is meant for the education of our children. And for the health of our women and children, that they don't steal the money that is meant for our highways. And the one that is meant to improve the country and several other things that we should be getting to fight corruption, promise. Another promise I have is to create an economy that is all inclusive, that will provide jobs for people who don't have jobs. Nigeria has got a lot of young people, they're looking for work after they graduated from school, they can't find work. Because there are no industries in the country. We only have generators that are killing our people with fumes at night. We need machinery that is working, not to be making noise. Because technology that will bring to bear Nigeria will bring machines that don't make noise anymore. Those are old ways of industrial development. So create an economy that puts money in people's pockets. Promise, the minimum wage of a Nigerian worker is thirty-nine pounds a month. That is not enough for you to buy ice cream for a month, right? So if your daddy and mommy were to be Nigerian workers, you would never have tasted ice cream in your life. Probably you would never be able to wear this suit you are wearing today. Looks very nice, by the way.
Now we are in the section of, the section of fundraising. The reason why we are gathered here tonight is to raise funds for this party. To raise funds for the campaign of A A C at all level from presidential to all, I mean, to all levels. And then Komesh Shwere is here, he has come all over the world. And he, he just, I heard him say that, uh, in Australia, he raised over twenty thousand dollars. And I think in UK, in London, we are the economic capital of the world, he keeps saying. Now we can do better than Australia. And I believe tonight, there are people here who are believing to Komesh Shwere and they still, they believe in the art that we need to do something. This is the first time I'm seeing back in Nigeria, people are giving money, their little end money to support a party.
That's right.
If it is, if Attiku should come here to UK now, who are, who are expecting to give us money? Because he was giving out how many thousands? Nine thousand dollars. By delegate, in the meantime. So for this time, we are doing fast funding of political parties and we are starting a revolution here in London and for A A C party. So I would like to call on Comrade, uh, Doctor Sedgley and, uh, our beautiful, uh, Comrade Shadee Oluwansoye. They have been, Oluwansoye, so they keep adding money. Our front line members of our group, on a group of unread, and, uh, they would like to talk against us and speak to us about the need for us to be able to raise. about the need for us to be able to raise money for our party.
Hello! Hello, everyone. How are you? It's nice to see you all here. Sure, some of you know me, some of you haven't. But if you haven't, that's fine. This is time for you to know me. I'm part of my hundred percent group. We are all friends of Choreo. For, for your information, this is the first time I am standing close to him. And I want Nigeria to be a better place for me and for you. Okay, so tonight, I want to enlighten you a little bit about the road ahead, the task ahead. Where do we start? Now, in Nigeria, we have thirty-six states. And for you to compete in Nigeria and win, for us to win, the take it backers, we need to compete in every state and every level. So now we have thirty-six states. Start imagining. In that thirty-six states, we need offices in those thirty-six states, including the FTC. In the offices, we need infrastructure, amenities, we need a boss, people's carrier to move, volunteers around, we need posters, we need B-boys, we need adwords on each, the delegates, governors, the native, the assembly, so you can see the task ahead. So now, as you know, we fund ourselves. We don't have any godfathers. So that's why during the primaries, members were asked to, you know, compete. We don't need to go and bribe Shumala or whoever it is to put our name forward. I could have competed, but I have something doing here. So you can tell me, imagine how. And this, our opponents, I gather that APC have listed ten billion. Ten billion. So now APC, APC of, I don't know how many there are, but I want you to imagine the task ahead. So when we are soliciting for funding, so I want you to imagine that. Not that we are soliciting for funding for, for the sake of it. So imagine this task, offices, infrastructures, movement here and there. So when we say, "Please give," we want you to give for you to understand what is better Nigeria for you and for me. Okay, so if you have offices to donate, that's fine. Vehicles to donate, that's fine. Money to donate, that's fine. And also, we want you to tell your brothers, sisters. So as, as, as Choreo said earlier on, we, I do, as far as I run my own the bag there, my mom, brothers, sisters, obviously, I've told them already. This is my mom, God bless her, she's gone, but she knows Choreo's pictures. She was holding it, but she's going to vote, she's looking for this face, this, this, I'm going to vote for this. Otherwise, there will be no Christmas money. Everyone knows that already. Okay, so now, the issue of fundraising. This is where it comes in. So I'll now leave it to my colleagues to shed more light to you.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks once again for coming. I'm glad my colleague, brother, friend.
Take it back, us.
Um, to summarize what we are up against in this talk, in this campaign scenario, um, summarize that, uh, principal, um, of Omoyele Choreo, um, the Victoria candidate from Omoya, Lagos, the DJ, they've all told you the what TIB stands for, the infrastructure and things, they want to make things better. But I'm going to, um, tell you a little bit about myself. I, why and how did I get involved with TIB? And I hope you relate to, um, what I'm about to say. Uh, personally, I was going through a bit of a rough time in my life and I had a personal coach and a mentor who encouraged me to get involved with the cause that I'm passionate about. I do volunteer for several charities, whatever. But come April, I had that Mr. Omoyele Choreo, I've been following him, by the way, um, Osara reported that he was coming out to, um, as an aspirant and the TIB movement. And my mind was going, "That is it, this is what I want to do." And believe me, I'm going to give all I have in me. My family knows about passion I have for TIB, AAC. Um, my mother, who I visited recently, she's campaigning for AAC.
Yeah, yeah.
She's calling people, telling them AAC. In fact, when she speaks about, um, Omoyele Choreo, you think she knows him personally? That is it. So that's just a little bit about me, why I've got to be involved. I really want a Nigeria that I, you, everybody can be proud of. A Nigeria where I can take my free keys to, and I will not be worried about security. I will not be worried about, oh, the generator just go off and I just run out of fuel or something like that. So I know, which and everybody have got their personal story and why they're involved. So I want you to key into that. And I know some of you have been given, you've been paying different kind of things, but tonight, I want you to do what we are here for. I want you to come to the present, whatever it is that you have tonight. It is in your pockets and I want you to give generously. And here's an analogy, this is a Christian analogy, David and Goliath. This is David. But I want you guys, we on here, we have the stones in our pockets. So I want us to take it to our pockets and we're going to give the AAC division, the campaign, the stones that we're going to use to kill Goliath come to 2019. So I'm going to hand back to Dr. Cedric.
Thank you. Now, we have envelopes here. And obviously, if you want to remember another month, that's mine. Otherwise, you can find the envelope around. Uh, whatever you have, please donate, if you put your name in it, and we would acknowledge you. But if you want to remember another month, that's fine. Also, if you want to continue, if you want to have bank accounts, go fund me. The last, uh, who will give that to you. So that you can set up direct debit, so you can set up direct debit. Uh, nothing is too small or nothing is too big. You have funds to donate to us, that's fine. Offices to donate to us, each of the state, any of the states, that's fine. Call your brothers, call your sister, it's part of the giving as well. Okay, and give them the direction, one, those of us that are doing it, we want a better Nigeria. There's nothing personal, we just want a better Nigeria. Okay, we want to remove that stigma, anywhere you go, are you a Nigerian? Say, "Oh."
You understand what I mean? Yes.
So we want to remove that, we want to be seen, we want to be respected. I want to be seen from someone from a responsible and respected country. Please give and give for us to be able to turn that country around. And God will bless the cheerful giver.
Oh, God bless.
Oh, that's a...
Take it back! Action!
I'm trying to say, I gave a crown this way. I'm even trying to say, in the cast, I've delivered up to a hundred and seventy pounds. That was just for the poster.
Oh, bless me, bless me, bless me.
Okay, hello, hello from Montana, because somebody just said, I would give you one minute to share his experience with us, please. I'm sure it's going to be a long one. Take it back!
Action!
Action!
Take it back!
Well, like one man brings us. I'm taking a walk. This is the first time, um, meeting this young man, for the first time. I never met him before. The passion that I've got, him or my, the whole of my family, that is the reason why we key into his vision. And we believe in his vision. I don't want to speak too much. What I want to say is, I know that everyone has a way of linking with people back home. But I want to say, share this with you. Please, camera, look at me, please, so that they can see what I want to say. I want everyone here and people all around the diaspora, please set up your personal WhatsApp group, not within the diaspora, within your family. If you've got mom and dad, let them be in, your friends. Then, at the end of the day, you have about five, ten from friends, other people who key into this, your WhatsApp, uh, set up this and you can be able to pass your information that you want your people back home, not here, to do for AAC party. That way, you are, you will be doing grassroots, uh, campaign. This is just what I want to share.
Thank you.
Take it back!
Lastly, on behalf of myself, my wife, my family, we are supporting this party with a thousand pounds.
Take it back! Action! Take it back!
Bless you, brother.
Awesome. Bless you. This is our victory.
Take it back! 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 Action!
Take it back!
Take it back! Take it back! Action! Take it back! Take it back! Action! The future is here, the future is now. It's time to join hands to save our fatherland. The soul of our country is waiting for our dreams. We can do from here and we can let, so we're having fun. Here's the way out for a new Nigeria of our dreams. Yeah, I see. Take it back! Take it back! Action! Yeah, I see. Take it back! Take it back! Take it back! South Nigeria now. Take it back! Nigeria now. Action! Yeah, I see. Take it back! Take it back! Action! Nigeria now. Take it back! Nigeria now. Action! Yeah, I see. Take it back! Take it back! Action! The future is here, the future is now. It's time to join hands to save our fatherland. The soul of our country is waiting for our dreams.
Ladies and gentlemen, um, Mr. Wale, the first one here, has just donated eighty pounds right now. AAC!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
I've got message from Mrs. Raleigh Jackson Taylor. She's just donated fifty pounds right now. AAC!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
I've got from Mr. Samson. Where's Mr. Samson? Oh, thank you, Mr. Samson. Forty pounds!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
I've got from Miss Alera Jackson. The sum of hundred pounds. Take it back!
Action!
Yeah.
On behalf of my husband, he said he would need hundred pounds.
Oh, hundred pounds from Mr. Wale Ajayi, hundred pounds! I know that I was... I'll get the money. Thank you very much.
Yeah, they're bringing it.
So, um, ladies and gentlemen, from Mr. and Mrs. Olawale Abimbola, another hundred pounds in cash. AAC!
Thank you.
Take it back!
Action!
Who has brought their envelope ready? Thank you very much. From, I've got to cough a bit before I announce this one, everybody. From Ambassador Amysys Andrew Onibe, one thousand pounds.
I want people in London to be provoked. And let's just do this.
Okay, I know, there's someone here who said another, another month, she don't know. They just gave a fifty pounds. I've got Sister Stella, will you? Oh, this is another anonymous one, three hundred pounds. From Sister Florence, you see one thousand pounds, take it, take it.
Take it, huh?
Take it, take it. Yeah, I want two thousand pounds, yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm now, thank you very much, sir, thank you, sir. I've got from Sister Florence Isibor. Sister Florence came all the way from commentary. She's been around six last nights for this event. And she's going to stay in London tonight because of this event. And she donated another fifty pounds. AAC!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
Yes, sir.
We're taking a grant payment of hundred pounds, action.
Thank you.
I've got from Mr. Chike. Um, Mr. Chike was one of the first people that bought our tickets for tonight. And not only that, he come here on time, he have to be second place up. And he donated another thirty pounds. Someone has donated another slave, another five pounds. AAC!
Take it back! Action!
Okay, I've got, um, Mrs. Adeyayo Akesola, who's donated fifty pounds. Best friends as well, fifty pounds. Okay, this is another one I'm going to talk before I announce. From Miss Tawatallitu Owueye, she donated five thousand posters for those states. Five thousand posters for Omoya's states. Also, our deputy women leader for the party.
For the party.
They're taking another one thousand pounds here on card.
Take it back! Action!
Hello everyone, in case you don't have your cash, we have POS there. In case you don't have your card, we have POS. We are ready to take it back, we are ready to enter every way. POS, yeah. You're waiting, there's so much right here.
Actually, I didn't know that they thought, uh, so I've got my son, he's coming.
Okay, we are here, we are here.
From Malaga from Manmok.
Okay. On behalf of my gentlemen. One, a little bit of audience, please listen, please, listen.
Please, guys, listen.
Listen, listen. On behalf of my gentlemen, I don't know where I had the idea of watching the same Asian presentation, but really believe in Nigeria to be fair. On his behalf, I forgive this group apart from my own donation to the Red Flag.
Yeah, I've got another anonymous donation here of twenty thousand. Does anybody want anymore envelopes or POS? Because that one's not, but it's not approved, take it approved.
Approved! There's more envelope please, more envelope. More envelope please. Have a look please, so we can be thank you guys. It's good to hear that, nice and peaceful country. We are enjoying our search there, we are thinking, oh, did you remember that town, that city, then? Cali Town, Grisly Pon Pon. For those of you, everyone who want to join, join the group, any other group. So you can join and inspire your family back home.
One thousand pounds taken on card.
Thank you!
I would like to seize this opportunity to, um, announce, um, from our Royal States Tribunal, um, Canada, two hundred and fifty pounds. They paid back for their seats earlier on, I just saw, it was nice to represent.
Thank you.
Yes, Stella Wilkie has just donated three hundred and ninety dollars. While we're waiting, um, for... Two hundred pounds taken on card.
Lim, please.
This is...
Thank you, sir. Longest arrival.
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
So while we're waiting for the POS donations in the corner, the DJ can, um, play our jingle. And, um, let's just see.
The gates. Raleigh Jackson, Raleigh Jackson Taylor, I'm going for me.
Yes, she's there.
Hello, hand him applause, hand him applause. As you can see, thank you. Yes, no Godfather, you are our Godfather and our Godmother. Would you answer to Basenjo, uh, Tidiboos? No, 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 no. They can't direct us, what, you know, they can't tell us what to do. We run the country for ourselves, for the betterment of ourselves. Let's donate handsomely for your country. For your country, so we can answer to you.
Five hundred pounds taken on card. Fifty pounds taken on card. He want to be anonymous. Fifty pounds on card. Yeah, someone here has donated, I was talking to that year, I keep today. Exactly, I keep today, just to make sure. Also, our youngest member as well, he's joining today as well. Three hundred pounds on card on behalf of Promise.
Let's take it back to our nation, we are strong, take, take it back.
The future is here, the future is now. It's time to join hands to save our fatherland. Our country is yearning for love to be free from greed and weakness. So wherever fire is the way out for a new Nigeria of our dream. AAC!
Two hundred pounds on card. Two hundred pounds.
The future is here, the future is now.
She promised five hundred, she gave you, Alaja. I've got your say, just donated five hundred pounds right now.
We want to welcome you, after your food. Another gift, another gift.
The future is here, the future is now. It's time to join hands to save our fatherland.
Hundred pounds on card.
Okay, let's take it back, your country, you don't have your stuff, you don't have your money. Nothing is true, nothing is true. I should know, follow money, let's come by, five dollar, two dollar, five dollar. I want you to enjoy, whatever can do, make it to it. Let's take it back, it's your country, but I'm still with that way. Not to Ali, not to Basenjo, not to Ratty. Let's take it back. Nothing is true, sir.
Hundred pounds on card. The card machine is still working. The card machine is still working, please. The card machine is still working, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll take a picture.
Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. AAC! Take it back! AAC! Take it back! Um, ladies and gentlemen, there's going to be plenty of time to take photographs. I'll just like us to take our seats. Ladies and gentlemen, I need to... Ladies and gentlemen, um, I've got a feedback from one... Ladies and gentlemen.
A C. A C. Take it back. Um, let us be orderly, please. Um, there is, there is a very important announcement, please. Very, hold on, hold on. Hello everybody. Hello everybody. Hello everyone. Hello. I need you to respond, hello. Okay, how many people here have a phone? How many of, can you wave it? Wave your phones. How many of you on Facebook? How many of you on Twitter? Right, before you leave this event today, it was successful, wasn't it? We want the world to know that. We want to shake Nigeria. So unanimously, all of us together are going to tweet about this event before we leave. Can we do that now, please? Together and share it with your friends, thank you. Take it back. Take it back. A C. Now, I can see that we want to take pictures with our, our president. Comrade Shoré. And he's eager to even take pictures with you, so he's not running away. So I would like you to please be on a line, be on a line, let us be orderly. Let us, let us, let there be a line. I can see the two AGAs there. They are in the forefront, but nobody is standing behind them. Let there be a long line, please. Comrade Cedric, please, help me coordinate them from the front. Yes. We are going to use the background of the post at the background there for to take the pictures. Now, and let us be very democratic, if you have taken a picture, go and sit down. And let others take the picture, your own pictures too. Okay, yeah, yeah, as soon as you take, you have taken your pictures, please sit down. Because we are going to have a meal, if there is, if you don't finish, we are not having a meal tonight. Please be quick. Done, okay, now you can leave now, next person, please. And people are getting their phones ready, checking their, checking if you've got enough space. Now, next person, please. Excellent, next person, please, next person. Great. A C. Take it back. Great, next person, please. Great. And um, thank you, thank you, next person. I would like to say thank you to all our donors today. Your donation will not go away. It will not go away, we are taking our country back. We are taking our country back. Every pound is matter, every dollar is matter. Every little help. Let it be that you have it on your record that you did something towards a cause, to retrieve your country back from the cabals. From the cabals, from the war broke. Now, if you're taking your picture, Mr. Man, that is too much, you are taking too much picture. Next. Oh, that's good. That's a good cue, yeah, that's a very nice cue. If you have taken your picture, just take a seat, then after all, you could have a meal.
Okay, next please. Hold the camera, drop it please. Next.
Take it back. There is, um, if you would like a copy of the jingle. We can send it to you, that's a link to the jingle. And um, the producer of the jingle would like to tell us something about the jingle. Take it back. Take it back. Alright, and the new jingle is available if you want it on your phone. You can come right to the DJ stand here, we can send it to you via WhatsApp. And then you can share it on all your social media. And tell us, it's a great way to take the message to the grassroots. You can come to this um, staff, to the DJ stand for the audio um, copy of the music if you want. And then also, a link will be available later, maybe on Take It Back um, platform. For you to download or to send to other people to download. Thank you very much, let the music play, thank you. Um, take it back. Um, as we are taking the pictures, let us, after you have taken the picture, please go to your seats. Next, the buffet is starting any moment from now.